Hey, good morning. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Birmingham. I want to welcome everyone here to the Birmingham City Council's meeting of July 28, 2020. We were going to have our invocation by Ms. Patricia Bell and our pledge of allegiance by Counselor Woods. If everyone could please stand.
Good morning, everybody. God bless you. Thank you, councilman, for the honor of having this chance to pray for our city. Thank you, Lord, for your love, your mercy. God, we ask you to forgive us for our sins. Help us, God, to be the people, the citizens that you're calling us to be. God, we pray for the anointing on us as your people. We pray for our leaders. We pray for the mayor, the city council. Help us, God, to do the things that you would have us to do in this day and time. Make our city a better beacon, not only to the nation, but to the world. God, we don't want to let you down. Help us to be strong, to be examples for the generation to follow us. Help us to carry the legacy of those who gave their blood, sweat, and tears for the city and the state of Alabama. The city of Birmingham, we thank you for our city, God. We thank you for showing us how much you love us, and we want to love you bad, God. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clark.
How you doing?
Good morning here.
Counselor member, who are you?
President.
Counselor member, who are you?
Good morning here.
Good morning.
Counselor member Woods.
President.
Counselor member Abbott. President Parker.
Here. Good morning. All right, the minutes are not ready for February 18 through July 21, 2020. So, let's see, the mayor in, but when he comes in, we will move forward with his communication. What do I want to do? Let's go ahead. We've got three presentations, I think. That's all. So, if we could, Senator, I mean, not Senator, I'm sorry. Counselor Smithman, good morning. You start with your presentation, then Mr. Hilliard, you've got two. So, Counselor Smithman, if you want to go and get started.
Yeah, thank you, President Parker. I know some people are here in the audience, LaShawn Hill and other women. If you all will come to the podium, I'm sure you have just a few brief remarks after I talk about this resolution. I'll be very quick. This is about saying that the city of Birmingham is going to support the piece of legislation called the National Crown Act. And basically, I'll talk about it more, it's very significant to my heart as a woman of color who has been wearing her natural hair for a majority of her life. I'm sure a lot of black women and black men can attest to just the, having the insecurity or having the worry of being possibly fired from the workplace or being judged wearing the natural hair that comes out of our own scalps. So, I'll just read a little bit of the resolution. So, whereas National Crown Day also referred to as creating a respectful and open world for national hair act was created in 2019 to ensure protection against discrimination based on race-based hairstyles by extending statutory protection to hair texture and protective styles such as braids, locks, twists, and knots in the workplace and public schools. And whereas the purpose of this act is to institute definitions of race and national origin for federal civil rights laws that show the comprehensive scope of protection Congress intended to be afforded by such laws and Congress's objective to eliminate race and national origin discrimination in the United States. And whereas first introduced in California in January 2019 and signed into law on July 3, 2019, the inaugural Crown Act expanded the definition of race in the Fair Employment and Housing Act and State Education Code to ensure protection in workplaces and K-12 public and charter schools. Since then, the Crown Act has gained support from federal and state legislators in the movement to end hair discrimination nationwide. And whereas the hopes are to increase protection against discrimination due to hairstyles with inclusive language that prohibits race discrimination in the workplace and school policies. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring hereby observe July 3, 2020 as National Crown Day in the City of Birmingham. Presented this 3rd, well, we did it back to July 3, but presented this 3rd day of July, 2020 at the Recommendation Council, Crystal Smithman. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for recognizing natural hair in the city of Birmingham. I'm a little bit nervous. I don't speak in front of people, so be patient with me. But it is a project that is near and dear to my heart because I am a natural hairstylist. I have a natural hair shop, and I've heard many stories about people who have been discriminated just because of their look and their natural hair. And I especially want to thank Councilwoman Crystal Smithman for recognizing. And she wears her natural hair. That's why I approached her first. And I talked with her about it, and she has supported us full on this project right here. And I just want to thank all of the councilmen for hearing us this morning.
And just a short note, Alabama, this hasn't passed on the state level. So, is Birmingham the first city to pass something like this?
Actually, no. We have two municipalities, Sissonette, Ohio, and Montgomery County, Maryland, that have passed. And if Birmingham passes it, it'll be three.
But in the state, we're the first?
Yes.
Do you want to say something?
No, I just want to say, just for the benefit of people who don't know a lot about the Crown Act, on July 16, 2020, we actually had a total of seven states who have passed the Crown Act.
Ma'am, could you talk into it so that way we can hear you, well, people in the audience?
We have several states as of July 16, 2020, we have a total of seven states that have passed the Crown Act to protect legal rights against race-based hair discrimination in workplaces and schools. And they are California, New York, New Jersey, Virginia, Colorado, Washington, Maryland. And so, thanks to LaShawn Hill, we're working on, once we get past the municipality, is try to see if we can get the state of Alabama to also adopt the Crown Act.
Well, I want to say thank you for bringing this. It's a little late for my natural hair act. But I love sporting a beard, and your hair looks lovely. And my chief, my administrative assistant, he has a natural hair look too. He's not in here, but every, you know, no one should be discriminated because of the way they look or size, weight, or anything. So hopefully, those days will quickly be behind us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, do we have the, do we have Emma Tarbitt with VIA? Are they here? Okay, come on up. Emma, do you want to speak first and play the video? I'll just let you.
Sure.
Get ready to queue it up. So how do you want to do it?
Okay. Well, I just wanted to thank you. I just wanted to thank you, Counselor Hilliard, for taking a few minutes today to showcase Birmingham On Demand and the service that VIA has been providing here in the city. Many of you know that to date, we've served about 18,000 rides. And thanks to Mayor Woodfin and the support of all of you, the service will continue through October 31st. And we are actively exploring ways to get this into the budget for 2021 so that we can keep the service and hopefully expand it. So, we have a video today, was produced by Martez Knalls and Bold As A Line Studios. It's beautiful, and it really showcases the impact that the service has had thus far. So, I also want to introduce Sam Slaughter, who drives for VIA and also is a rider. And many of you already know Josh Raby, who's worked with us on the marketing and community outreach for the service and also frequently rides the service. So, Sam, if we have a few minutes, I think Sam would like to say a few things.
Hey, everybody. Doing today?
Morning.
As she said, like she said, I'm a driver. I've been driving since the beginning of December the 3rd. And since I've been driving, I have seen the deep impact it has made on Birmingham. I've had the opportunity to get to know a lot of people, their families, and basically have become a household name to a lot of people in the community. And I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure that this service stays in service and so that we can continue to provide a service for the people of Birmingham. Thank you.
Very good. And we want to call the video up. Max, can we get that video now?
This is the Birmingham On Demand microtransit vehicle. This program has been going on for six months now in the city of Birmingham in a limited service area. And rides are $1.50 per ride anywhere in the service area. We've had about 15,000 rides over the past six months.
I'm Counselor John Hilliard. I'm riding with Birmingham On Demand.
They are a very valuable resource, especially for those with mobility issues such as myself. They make getting around the city a lot easier, and it's very cost efficient, too.
This is how you get to the grocery store. This is how you get your doctor's appointment. This is how you get to work, and it's only $1.50. I'm Stephen Hoyt. I'm the Chair of the Transportation Committee and the Council for District 8. And guess what? I'm riding with On Demand.
I've been using VIA to ride back and forth to the MAX bus station. I also use MAX bus and also the VIA. When I can't get a bus, as you see, it just got through raining, and they're a convenient alternative. If you can't get the bus, you can get VIA.
The first thing I want to talk about is we've got some politicians that see needs in this city. And we've got councilors that was Darlo Quinn and John Hilliard that seen a need back in December of 19. But they said, hey, we need some better transportation in addition to our good transportation of MAX.
Hi, I'm Counselor Crystal Smithman. I'm Ryan with Birmingham On Demand.
So, in order to use the service with Birmingham VIA, all you need is a telephone number and a credit or debit card. We'll pick you up at one of our pinpoint locations and then give you a call so that we can make sure that we're both at the designated location. And then we'll pick you up, and then you'll ride in a clean environment to whatever drop-off location of your choice you chose.
They wish for more opportunities. They wish for expansion. So, I think it's important that we continue this service, but we continue by expanding it as well, making sure more people have opportunities. And the thing I like the most is, you know, all things being equal, if everybody had an opportunity to get a job, is access to get to that job would be the most critical. So, I think it's important.
I find that the impact that VIA has on this city is enormous. And that's speaking from a driver's perspective because I meet a lot of the people, and a lot of people are able to access hospitals, jobs. Numerous of people have gained employment, been having access just to get to the job, back and forth with VIA. So, they really, really love it.
So, thank you again, Counselor Hilliard, for showing that today. We hope that everyone will try the service if you have not already. Any of your constituents can simply download the VIA app and use code BHMSAFE to take a free ride. So, please utilize that. I know many of the councilors that are within the zone also have some On Demand passes that they can use that will provide five free rides for people who need the service, and seniors, and people, essential workers, people who need to get to the grocery store, those kind of things. So, please utilize those opportunities and help us keep Birmingham On Demand moving through our streets.
Wow. First, I want to say thank you for bringing that to us. I love the video. And it just shows what can happen when the council come together along with the mayor's office to make Birmingham have options and increase the visibility and look out for our citizens. So, it's fantastic to see that VIA and MAX can operate in the same space and fulfill needs. And we look forward to more collaborations among those departments. And to Dr. Quinn and Councilwoman Quinn, we really appreciate all that he did because he really helped lead the way to make this happen, and I'm glad that I was a part of that. And so, and now with our other council people here, Councilman Hoyt, who's now chairing Transportation, to see a need and get involved, and all of the rest of the council. Thanks to everybody, and thank you to VIA.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And what I'd like to add is, and I don't know if any other councilors have anything they'd like to add, I do appreciate the work and the service that you all provide for the citizens who are in, within those areas for giving them that mobility, that opportunity to get to work, get to the hospital, get to the doctor, and those things. I was very encouraged by what the mayor said in the video. I am, of course, want to see this expanded into other areas, primarily District 7. I do know that we do have some riders that actually will go to your spots to get picked up from District 7. So, if we could expand that, I'd be very happy. But thank you all, and I want to thank my councilors for your vision and supporting that and being sure that this became a part of services to our citizens. Did either other councilors have any words they'd like to say?
Yes.
Yes, Counselors.
Thank you, President, President. I really love VIA. I actually rode VIA last year, and it was a great experience. It was very cost efficient because Uber and Lyft are pretty expensive, but VIA was very good. I felt very comfortable, especially being a single, young woman. I do have some numbers. I know Emma gave me the numbers. But as of July 1 for District 6, they had over 6,500 requests. And at our town hall last week with the mayor, they had actually, did you say there's 18,000 rides total for the whole city?
Yes, ma'am.
And it was about at least 7,000 for District 6. So, I really appreciate you all for bringing this to the district. It's only a part of it. I was on the Transportation Committee at the time when we passed it. But I really want to take, thank Counselor O'Quinn and Hilliard. They've been very progressive in making sure we have more affordable means of transportation. So, thank you all for having the service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have another, one more.
Okay, thanking Counselor Parker's back, but I'll go ahead and let you do that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Pro Tim. You always do such an excellent job.
Thank you.
And by the way, belated, happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes, we have another resolution by an entrepreneur. We're going to ask his family to come in and just kind of line up around the podium there. Spread it out just a little bit. All right, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. It is a distinguished honor to recognize such a distinguished gentleman. We have Mr. Amin Punawala's family here today, who was an entrepreneur, a serial businessman, man in the Ansley area. And before we actually get started, you know, I just want to tell you, it was just a pleasure to know your father, your uncle, your husband. It was just awesome to just be involved with him. You know, it really has taken my office by storm because, as you know, as a councilman for District 9, he was one of the first businesses that reached out to me. He borders my district and Councilman Hoyt's district, right next to Marino's Grocery Store. His convenience store was across the street, and his chicken restaurant was there. I want to queue up a video, and then we'll go into the conversation after that. So, if we could have the video that we did when we first got started, we can queue that up now.
Some extra crispy economic development is coming to Ansley in District 9. Recently, Birmingham City Councilor John Hilliard welcomed crispy crunchy chicken, one of 1,800 locations nationally, to the community and thanked all the hardworking people who made the grand opening possible.
Good. We are excited here today for this ribbon cutting ceremony, for this great new crispy restaurant, a chicken restaurant, to be located in District 9 in the Ansley area. Mr. Amin and his brother here are opening up this facility so that they can provide more jobs and economic development in the community. They've not just come to this area. Mr. Amin has had a store here for over 12 years, and he's really been working with the people and employing a lot of people from District 9. Now, he wants to expand and give more jobs and economic and opportunity. I just want to say, we're excited to have you here in our community this day. We welcome you and your wife and your family. Your younger brother here, who's a hard worker and moving around. They have other restaurants and stores in Houston, Texas, so we're happy to have him come to Birmingham.
During the ribbon cutting ceremony, which included excited citizens, local small business owners, and elected leaders, Hilliard highlighted the importance of having people in the community who are committed to serving others. The Punawala family who immigrated to the United States represent how hard work and dedication can lead to a successful business and how a diverse community equals a strong community, one that everyone can benefit from.
It's always, I always learn, and actually, we have been taught in our business. It's not about color, creed. It's about one. Everyone, we are created by one soul. So, we are all brothers. It doesn't matter what you do, where you live. Until we work together, you know, there's always a better future for every single one of us.
For all the latest news and information, be sure to visit our website and subscribe to news updates.
I want to thank you for that memory of Mr. Punawala, who life was taken in that very business across the street from his restaurant on that very dark day. I want to say to the family, it is indeed an honor for the Birmingham City Council to recognize the distinguished work that Mr. Punawala has done over his lifetime. He's been a servant of the community. He has been a father of three children, a husband. He's worked really hard in District 9 to make it one of the premier business places. As he said, "We are all one." In his words, "There is no difference between color, race, black and white." A lot of us are immigrants in this great city, this great country, and we believe that someday, the work that he's laid out before us and the things that he's done will turn around and come back. We will continue to fight the fight. We will continue to work hard. And I want to say to this family, on this distinguished day, over the 15 years that your husband, that your father made a difference, his legacy will live on. It will live on through each and every one of you. You will not bow down or allow these thugs and these people to take advantage of your dream. I implore you to keep the dream alive. And on the behalf of the Birmingham City Council, I want to present this resolution to the family. On the behalf of the Birmingham City Council, the mayor of the city of Birmingham, I present to you a resolution to your family, and whoever wants to come forward and speak, feel free to do so.
I want to thank the mayor and Councilman Hilliard for the love and support he's shown us and our family. But most importantly, I want to thank him for honoring dad's memory and his legacy. My father had a simple philosophy: help others with a hand, but help them in a way that the other hand doesn't find out. And he taught us that since childhood. My dad didn't help people so that he could be considered a great man or in order to boast. He just had a simple dream, which was to work hard and help his family succeed. And in a way, help others, help other families feel the same achievement and attain that same dream. My dad loved Birmingham. He loved Ansley, and he worked there for over 15 years. But he didn't do it because he wanted to make money. He did it because he thought of them as family. He said, "That's my brother from another mother. That's my sister from another mister." Ansley was his family, and it's only fitting that he went away over there. He loved Birmingham, and he loved to show love and support to Birmingham. So, I want to thank Birmingham for showing us the same love and support that my father showed you guys. And I know my family joins me in these sentiments. Thank you all. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Anyone else? I want to make sure. Okay, very good. I want to thank the Birmingham City Council, my colleagues, and if anyone wants to, any of my colleagues wants to say anything, then we'll move for the.
You got two. Did you have two resolutions?
No, just one.
Okay, all right. Move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone from the council, if you have anything to say?
Well, I'd like to thank this family for your graciousness to come up here and to, you know, humility is what you allow others to do, and you've shown great humility this morning. And so, we appreciate that, and we are very sorrowful that this happened. But hopefully, the Birmingham Police Department would not stop until we find the person who took his life. I think that's important. I want to thank the council for always working on behalf of the citizens of District 9. We do share the district, and we appreciate you all being there to provide a service for the people in the Ansley. It's just one segment of a larger community, and for the most part, we got some good folk in that community. And so, I just want to say to you all, thank you for your service to the city. It is certainly appreciated, and we pray God's peace be upon you as you all endure this time of grieving. God bless you.
Thank you, councilman. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I guess we'll, I'll ask us to move outside. We're going to take pictures out front.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, Counselor Hilliard, before you leave, with the previous presentation, did you have a resolution dealing with that? That's what I was asking about.
For VIA, you didn't have one for that?
No, no, I did not. Let's just show the video. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda starts on page 2 with items 1, 2, I'm sorry, 3, and 4. Skip over to page 3. We have items 5, 6, and 7 on consent. Page 4, we have items 8, 9, and 10 on consent. We have some language change on 10, so I'll just read it to you right quick. A resolution authorized the mayor to execute an agreement with BeGrace Media LLC in an amount not to exceed $20,000. So, you should be changing that to $20,000 to provide social media strategies, community engagement, and videography that will assist the city of Birmingham's District 1 and 9 with interactive, with interaction with constituents. The fee of these services are not to exceed $20,000, inclusive of any reimbursable expenses. Said funds to come from District 1 discretionary fund not to exceed $7,422.20 cents, and District 9 discretionary fund not to exceed $12,577.80. These services will begin July 15, 2020 and conclude no later than June 30, 2021. And we go over to page 5, and we have items 11, 12, 13, and 14 on consent. Item 11 was recommended by Budget and Finance. Page 6, we have items 15, 16, and 17 on consent. Page 7, we have item number 18 on consent. And please note that items 19, 20, and 21 should be withdrawn. Page 8, item 22 should be withdrawn, and we have items 23 and 24 on consent. Page 9, we have items 26, 27, 28. nine, we have items 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 on consent, as well as 31. Page 10, we have items 32, 34, 35, 36, and 36 are on consent. Items 33 and 37 should be withdrawn. That's 33 and 37. Page 11, we have items 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43 on consent. Page 12, we have items 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49 on consent. Page 13, we have items 50, 51, 52, and 54 on consent. Please note that item 53 should be withdrawn. Page 14, we have items 55, 56, 57, 58, and 59 on consent. Page 15, we have items 60, 61, 62, 63, and 64 on consent. Page 16, we have items 65, 66, and 67 on consent. And on page 17, we have item number 70 on consent. And we have, one, two, three, six addendum items?
Yes, sir. Okay. All righty, Council Smith, will you start? Are you, you good with the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I add some?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I just wanted to call, I was going to start on your side.
Okay. I'm not sure about item 71, but I'll put it on there. 71, 72.
Objection.
No.
Okay, 72, 73.
You object to 71?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 71 is...
72, 73, 74, 75, and 76.
Okay. All right, cool. President Protem Alexander?
Those were some of my items, so I'm good with what the council is...
All right, Council Hilliard?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you. I want to, I want to move 49, 50, and 51.
From the consent agenda? Okay, 49, 50, 51. Uh, let's see.
12 and 13.
12 and 13. Okay, all right. Counselor Dr. Quinn, we're good, okay. Counselor Woods, Counselor Williams are good?
Item 34.
34? Okay.
Was that the page you said?
Item 34. I think, I think we're going to probably send those, delay those. There's a couple of them there.
What are we doing with 34, sir?
Yeah, we're going to take that off consent. I think Counselor Hilliard and Counselor Woods will probably delay those as a group. Counselor Abbott, Counselor Hoyt, Counselor Hoyt?
Yes. Page four, item 10. And maybe if I could, somebody could show me the transparency on this.
Yeah, we'll make sure, if you keep it on there, we'll make sure you get it on that one for item 10.
I'd like to see it before I vote on it.
Okay. Is it, is it in the packet?
And I didn't see it. I could have overlooked it. You know, it's not always in order, but if somebody could get that to me, I'd be fine. Items 11?
Are we taking 10 off?
Yes. 10 and 11. Items 15, 16, 17. Item 18. And I think you withdrew, was it 19 through 21, was it?
Yes, withdrawn.
Okay, 19 and 20 and 21?
And 22.
And 22, okay. And item 24 off consent. I think that may, that may be it.
Sure. All right, is item, do we see if item 10 was in the packet? Okay. It's in the packet right after number nine. Yeah, it's in there. Yeah.
Is it in your cash, Mr. Counsel?
I did, I...
We'll keep 10 on consent then. So let's keep...
I think it's good.
You want to keep 10 on consent?
Well, I don't see the, now I see the scope of work, but I didn't see the transparency. Okay.
You're good then?
Okay.
Okay, we'll keep 10 on consent. Okay. Any others you have questions about? Counselor Hoyt, are we good now?
Yeah, that's good on that.
Okay, we're good. 10's on consent. Okay. All right.
11, yes. I took that off because I want to focus explain what we're doing here. So just leave that off.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Let me read the tag if there's any more questions real quick.
Thank you, sir.
"All items designated as consent are routine and uncontroversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced." Okay, we're ready?
Mr. President, you want me to run back through that? Are you good?
No, we're good. Okay. All right, we're ready for the consent agenda for a vote.
Hey, Counselor Member Williams for the motion and...
Yes, sir.
Second.
Counselor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor Member Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods?
Yes.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, okay, all right, the consent agenda passes. First item, Mr. Clark?
All righty, let's see. Should be item 11? Item 11, "A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Message Point Media of Alabama Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $27,987.70 to provide social media strategy, community engagement, and videography that will assist the Birmingham City Council with its website support and advertising signage services. The fee for these services not exceed $27,987.70 inclusive of any reimbursable expenses and will begin July the 28th, 2020 and conclude no later than June 30th, 2021. Motion, please."
Second.
All right, Counselor Hoyt?
Excuse me? What are, what are we doing here and how we, how would the council access this?
Administer a kid, or...
Yes. Good morning. Message Point is a vendor that we've employed for about eight years plus. We have now added website services to his contract because we haven't had website services for some time. What you're seeing on our boards, out in our lobby, and in our lobby and also here, those are the assistance that he provides to us, that kind of media signage. So he will now also help us with our social media strategy by helping us to employ Keyhole and serve as that third-party vendor for us to access those types of services which we haven't had in the past. So you should be getting more of a read on your reach and your distance and your contacts as to how we engage social media. And so all of the other things that he's been doing, he's been doing for the last four or five years. The advertising of the signage that's there and the videography, he does videography to help support the data there. The signage that is coming up under there, the decorum, where you see that, he helps us to keep that as a running board. And this morning, Counselor Alexander asked that we could put the COVID information up there and have it to run simultaneously with the agenda.
Very good. I just wanted to know, because I, this is the first time seeing this, and just need to understand, you know, how do we access it? And the fact that it would be some balance in, in what we do in terms of messaging and what have you. So, good.
Yes, in the past, his contract was about $8,000, so it did not need to come before the council. But given that it exceeded the $10,000 mark, we had to bring it before you.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. All right, we're ready to vote. Mr. Clark?
Counselor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Member Quinn?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Member Woods?
Yes.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, okay. That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark?
Going to 15?
Yes, sir.
"A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the master venue agreement between the city, the park and recreation board, NTWG 2021 Birmingham Foundation to reflect changes necessary as a result of the COVID-19 public health emergency, specifically but not limited to amending the date of the event to July the 7th, 2020 through July the 17th, 2022."
Move the item. Second.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, again, just to kind of explain what's going on here.
What, as you know, the World Games was moved back one year because of the COVID-19. This is us making, the master agreement just being changed, dates changed. There are some new venues that are coming online, serving in different capacities. Legion Field will now host flag football. And so we're excited about that. And so the opening and closing will move to the downtown stadium. So still utilizing Boutwell, Crossplex, Avondale Park, I think Bessiusdale Park. I don't know, did I miss anything? I might have missed one or, but anyway, that's just our master agreement that we passed last year.
This is just amended?
Yes, sir, with those modifications I just mentioned.
All right.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. All right, we're ready to vote. Mr. Clark?
Counselor, President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor Member Quinn?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods?
Yes.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark?
Should be item 16?
Yes, sir.
"A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a first amendment to the home investment partnerships program and development agreement with Central Alabama Housing Alliance, under which the existing agreement dated September the 20th, 2019, and approved by the resolution number 1907-18, will be amended to increase funding in the amount of $1 million for home funds, bringing the total amount of funding available to an amount not to exceed $1,200,000, and increasing the construction of affordable single-family housing units from four units to up to 11 units. Motion, please."
Move the item. Approval.
Counselor Hoyt? Yes, well, I'm, I'm just trying to see, um... This is a budget item that we amended. And what effect would it have on the current budget or the ensuing budget? Since we cutting back folk, I'm just trying to see.
Mr. President?
Good morning.
Chad's got a new haircut. Go on, Chad.
It's summertime, Counselor Hoyt. It's summertime. I got, you know, summertime. Counselor Hoyt, to answer your question, it's basically just amending the CDB budget. It's not dealing with the general fund.
Right. Well, and, and, and that's, and so this is within the CBDG monies?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you just identified the project. Okay, so it had not been identified before now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I just want to understand, you know, we're doing a lot of stuff. I just want to know.
Yes, sir. All right, okay. All right, we're ready to vote on this item.
Counselor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor Member Quinn?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods?
Yes.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
All right, okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark?
Should be 17, "A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Emergency Solutions Grant Program, funding in an amount of $200,000 and upon award of said grant, authorizing the mayor to enter into an emergency solutions grant agreements in a format prescribed by the Emergency Solutions Grant Program Regulation to provide emergency solutions, grant shelter, operations, funding to support ongoing homeless shelter expenses, and to execute any other documents as required by Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs to implement the Emergency Solutions Grant Program Competitive Grant. Motion, please."
Second.
Okay, Counselor Hoyt?
Microphone keep going on. Yeah, if someone could explain to me if, how are we going to track this once funds are distributed? I know this is a grant. I guess we're making the application to the, to a DECA. And just trying to see how we plan to monitor that and to see what agencies are receiving money as a result of this, this grant opportunity, if realized.
Okay.
What mechanism?
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chris Hatcher, interim director of community development. We will track these funds through our normal application process. Once we, if we receive the funding, we will solicit proposals for nonprofits who would like to assess the money to provide homeless prevention services.
Okay, you know, the council is not always aware of who's being hit by some of these dollars. So what I want to do, Mr. President, is to ensure that the council will have an update once we receive the dollars and to see how this money is being spent. I just think that's important.
Yeah, I think we probably would go another step further as to who's being, the information going out, perhaps we could help boost it out?
Exactly.
And provide it to, so let's approve it, but let's also just ask that if the process, you know, the application process is, once it opens up, if, you know, the council can help provide the applications, because we get, we all receive people, you know, requesting stuffs.
Funds every day?
Yes, sir. So, and that's part of the larger conversation we're going to have as far as some other, I mean, the, as relates to CDBG that, I think they did the great workshop yesterday on stuff and the applications I think are due later this week. So we're going to make sure the word goes out.
I don't even know all that.
Well, they sent it out, I think it was on Thursday, but what I'm saying is we've got a, you know, we're going to make sure we help amplify and utilize all our, our resources and tools to be able to make sure all nonprofits understand the process and whether, and when the deadlines, and whether they apply or not, that'll be on them, but...
We all got nonprofits in our districts?
I understand.
That could benefit from these dollars.
Well, that's what we're going to ask for, that information. I think that'll be fine. And then if we need to have people to provide a class or something on how to, you know, talk about the, the process and, you know, to help them, I think that's some things we can do as well. So we'll be, we'll utilize all tools, have workshops if necessary to talk through examples of how to work through the, the application process, if that's necessary.
Oh, it would be.
Okay, all right, well, that's where we're going. And that's on our committee, the whole agenda is to talk through that kind of stuff as well. Okay, so, all right, we're ready to vote on item 17. Okay, so, all right, we're ready to vote on item seventeen.
Councillor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Councillor member here you.
Aye.
Councillor member Hoyt?
Yes.
Councillor member O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councillor member Smithman?
Aye.
Councillor member Williams?
Aye.
Councillor member Woods?
Yes.
Councillor member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, okay, all right, that item passes. Next item, please.
All right. It's like we're going to eighteen?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes.
Item eighteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor, oh, hold on one second. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the professional consulting services agreement between the city of Birmingham and GCR Incorporated to increase funding of an existing community development block grant agreement whereby an amount of sixty-one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars from CDBG funds will be added to the existing amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, bringing the total amount of funding available to an amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-six thousand and eighty dollars. Motion please.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, councillor Hoyt? What are we doing?
I don't know why y'all keep talking to my phone. I mean, my.
I'm sorry, just. Yes, sir. Mr. President, councillor Hoyt, um, GCR will be doing a housing plan amendment. It basically will develop a policy tailored to the unique market conditions in Birmingham.
Chad, just bring it, Mike, just a little closer. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. The recommendations will include program updates and forward-thinking planning objectives for the city and the department. Also, they will be providing a housing plan that will inform internal and external stakeholders of the strength and opportunities of the housing and community development in Birmingham. Also, they will help create a GIS system portal that will help with our, um, housing plan going forward. And lastly, they will help with staff training for, to go after grants.
Okay, and will that information be shared with the council?
Yes, sir, I can send this to you right now.
Okay, very good.
And what we'll do is to make sure as we follow through, uh, making notes now to make sure that we have, it's on, it's a standing item on our committee to hold, just as, as an update, uh, period, you know, if it's not every month, every two months, so that we'll have that. So, that way we can all receive that information. So, I think we'll work through that as well. Is that?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, all right, uh, good on item eighteen. We're ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
Councillor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Councillor member here you.
Aye.
Councillor member Hoyt?
Yes.
Councillor member O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councillor member Smithman?
Aye.
Councillor member Williams?
Aye.
Councillor member Woods?
Yes.
Councillor member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark, please.
All right, eighteen, we're gonna go to, again, items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two were withdrawn, so, and we will go to item twenty-four next. Item twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the exercise of the city's power of eminent domain to acquire a temporary construction easement and fee simple title to a right-of-way consisting of approximately, uh, point zero thirty-seven acres of real property located at ninety-four Pike Road, Birmingham, three five two one eight, for the purpose of completing the Bellevue Heights neighborhood gateway beautification project. It includes installing pedestrian lighting, decorative sidewalks, and landscape on Avenue I from Pike Road to Forty-Eighth Street Birmingham pursuant to ordinance number sixteen dash one forty-five.
Move the item.
Second.
Councillor Hoyt, senior district, sir.
I didn't, I didn't know if you could shout in the, in the, uh, in the chambers, but I'm gonna do this here.
All right, this is moving forward, that's what you've been asking about.
Yeah, been, been waiting on this for a long time, so I'm just.
All right.
Doing this here, so y'all interpret on the, uh, on the, uh.
Just happy. All right.
Cause this is all I would do. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, all right, we're ready to vote. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Datch.
Councillor member Alexander?
Aye.
Councillor member Protem Alexander, I apologize, councillor member here you.
Aye.
Councillor member Hoyt?
Indubitably, right?
Indubitably.
Councillor member O'Quinn? Councillor member Smithman?
Aye.
Councillor member Williams?
Aye.
Councillor member Woods?
Yes, Woods.
Councillor member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, all right, that item passes. Next item.
All right, item twenty-five, a resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of the city of Birmingham of two members to the Birmingham Airport Authority for six-year terms effective July the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and expire in July the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-six.
All right, here we are. I'm gonna move for a one-week delay on this one, only because the term has not expired. So it needs to come up next week. So, that's the motion for a one-week delay.
Second.
All right.
One, one second. Hoyt. Councillor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
All right. Well, yeah, I see everybody, so.
Yeah.
Let me hold off, is it, Mr. Hillier, good morning.
Well, let me say this, the, the terms actually expire, uh, on July twenty-ninth, so they're going to affect, so we wanted to make sure that they would be, uh, able to be at the first board meeting.
But the term expires tomorrow.
So this, yeah, the term expires tomorrow, so this resolution is just confirming that this would be effective.
We can't do that until the term expires.
Well, if, if it doesn't, I could call legal up to say that we can announce that we are going to have a term for a new appointment that is effective in two days. If you want OCA, if you don't, then it's y'all's pleasure.
No.
The thing is, it can come up next week and I'll fully, I'm gonna fully support it, but the, the issue is, until the term expires, we can't ratify. We had an issue, I mean, that's come up before when, uh, we wanted to do that before, uh, but once the term expires tomorrow, then you can do your appointment fine on Thursday, we'll just ratify it on Tuesday. That's all I'm saying, is that we can't take any action until the term actually expires and it expires tomorrow.
And those persons will continue to serve until they're replaced. And so, uh, the replacement, um, encompasses the ratification by this council. That's just, that's why it is. This ain't no new stuff, so. And it's his appointment, the mayor's.
Yeah, I, I understand all that, I'm just saying, but, but us, the appointments, you do it whenever the mayor chooses. I mean, it's just that we don't, we wouldn't ratify anything until the term actually expires. I mean, that, it, it wouldn't come, it'll come to us on Tuesday, fine, you know, or if we meet on Friday, I'm saying it would be fine. That's all, I was just saying, we don't, we wouldn't take any action until the actual, yeah, until the, unless, unless, I'm hearing something different, but I think that's the way it.
Well, and, and having been one to have been appointed to the airport authority at some point, um, could not take seat until it was ratified by the council. That's, that's been the order of this council. And, um, inasmuch, uh, we want to do something different than that, I just think, um, we've already charted those waters and what have you. And let's, let's do, I don't think a few, uh, one week would make any difference, um, you know, they're not going to the bond market no time soon, so.
Our only thing is.
And even if they were, then that person who ever sitting there will still be a board member and make those decisions, simply said. Yeah, but, but you continue to serve, uh, council, you know it better than me. You continue to serve until you have a replacement. That's in all of our boards.
If we need to come in on Thursday to do this, that's fine. I'm just saying, we just, I don't know that we can do it today. So, am I being told differently?
May I ask a question?
Okay.
When is the board meeting, you said? And when is their next upcoming board meeting?
The next Monday.
Next Monday?
Here's the deal, we'll table, we'll table this, uh, we'll table this item right now and we'll bring it back up if, and if, uh, finish. There'd be some conversations and.
But what you're gonna have, uh, Mr. President, if I may, um, you're gonna open Pandora's box because then any of our folk who term expires then means that we can change it before they actually expire. That, cause you can't treat one board differently than the other.
So, here's the deal, we're, yeah, we're gonna move to delay, cause.
Yeah, can't do that.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it is, um, yeah, the, the term expires tomorrow.
Yeah.
And then we just bring it, we just come back and deal with, because if that's the case, there are a lot of boards whose terms expire on, on like that Wednesday, and we have to wait till the following week to do it. Cause we've never taken up, we've never made appointments if the term is still in existence.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, just a correction, President Parker, um, the previous council, uh, in, I believe it was October of twenty seventeen, made five appointments to the BJCTA board before those terms expired.
No, those terms had expired. The terms had expired.
Expired by some, by some months or years.
Yeah, they had already expired. Once the term expires, then it is opens, it's fine. Once the term expires, there are a lot of people whose terms expire and then it might be three months before it's, it's done. But those terms had already expired. They, they, they did. They did, Dr. Quinn, they had already expired. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott?
I'm listening to all this, and, you know, I've been here since the beginning of the earth. And I do not recall that we have ever had this discussion before. We're not changing anybody's terms, we're just saying when they expire, this is what we want to do.
I, I got all.
So, if the terms expire tomorrow and we're saying we want to reappoint Robert Earl Kelly.
That's the mayor.
Well, the mayor, but we're going to confirm it, I assume. I don't see any reason not to. And are Ash V. Pate replacing Edgar Marks? I don't see why we're making an issue out of this, because we aren't changing anybody's terms. All we're doing is saying who's going to fill the spot once it ex, the, the last person's term expired. So I do, I do not recall us making a big issue out of this in the past. And I would think that it would ring a bell if we had this much conversation about trying to stop an appointment.
We're not stopping an appointment.
We're not doing that.
No, 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 and, and all I'm simply saying, those appointments came after the term expired. That's simply what I'm saying.
But what difference does it make?
Well, there, we've tried to move appointments before and it was brought to our attention that until the term expired, once the term expires, then they do whatever. But I'm just simply saying, the term has not expired. Therefore, there's no action to be taken.
But on Monday, when they have the meeting, these guys will be expired.
I, I understand that.
You can do a special call.
But that's why, we can come in on, we can, we can come in on Friday morning, or we can come in on Thursday morning and have another council meeting for this one item. I'm simply saying, today, we can't, we can't, we can't take any action, ratifying, uh, or whatever, once, until the term expires. That's all I'm simply saying. I, the mayor's is, can do whatever, but I'm just simply saying, when we've made appointments, it's once the term has expired. That's simply all I'm just saying. That's all I'm saying, is once the term expires.
Mr. President?
Hold on, hold on. I, I see attorney king, I just wanted to recognize, if you don't mind.
President Parker, are you talking about the judges or are you talking about?
Any, any appointments that we've dealt with. We, if, if the terms would expire on Wednesday, we could not make the appointments on Tuesday, the pre, the day before they expired. We had to wait till the following Tuesday. I'm just simply saying, that we're just going, it's, the terms are not expired. When the term expires, we bring this back up. That's all I'm simply.
Can I have attorney Smiley just provide some clarification?
That's fine.
What about the clerk? The clerk is the expert.
Counselors, there is actually no legal impediment to appointing, um, these individuals today when the term is going to expire tomorrow. There, the new appointment will not be effective until after the existing term expires. And we find there to be no legal impediment to that. I'm not sure of the situations that you're referring to in the past. I don't know the particular facts of those situations, but in this instance, that we find no problem with you, um, confirming the appointment today.
Okay, let me, I had a question for you, attorney. Yeah, so, so then, explain to me, um, the purpose of ratifying. If this, if this, if it doesn't matter, then why, why even, even bring it to the council for a vote? I, I mean, I'm just, you know, because we've been, we've been in this place before, I don't know where Valerie was when she, when we dealt with this. But we dealt with this with the housing authority, we dealt with this, uh, even with the, um, with the airport before. We, we dealt with this same kind of, uh, scenario. So, um, I just want to understand, because whatever road we chart, it's gonna be good, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. That's all I'm saying. And I don't have a problem with changing the rules if it's gonna apply to every board and what have you. And so what's the purpose? Because, you know, and I've heard the council, uh, I mean, I heard councillor Abbott say, it don't matter. Well, when, when we've appointed folk, it had mattered, uh, and what have you, some folk were interviewed, some folk weren't interviewed. And, uh, and then with, they were appointed. And then they said it mattered, but nowadays it doesn't matter. So, you know, you're gonna have to be who you need to be. Uh, and I don't have a problem with rules. I provide by the rules, but don't change them, uh, just to fit one scenario. I need it to fit everything. And so if you explain to me ratification, and I don't have a problem over this today, if you're saying that we can ratify something that has not happened, now you tell me that in the law.
I'm telling you that if the council's prerogative today, if you desire to ratify this appointment, you have authority to do that. This new term will not go into effect until the existing term is expired.
So, let me ask you this question on a larger scale. So we've got a bunch of appointments coming up.
Right.
So, then that means we can make an appointment, we can ratify it two weeks before the term expires? Is that, if I'm hearing that, then we're good? I just need, we just need a, we need it written and then we can, we can get ready? I mean, just in, I mean, how far in advance do we have to, no, what I'm saying is.
That's all.
How far in advance do we then, can we start, so we got somebody's term that expires in January, I'm just saying in December, can we start now and ratify it and it goes into effect? I'm just, if it's one day, it's, I'm just trying to get, what is, yeah, what is that? And so we'll know across the board.
So, President Parker, what you have today is the term is going to expire tomorrow. And so that's why we were saying that you all have the purview today to vote, but it does not change the terms.
I, I got all of that. I understand all of that. And the reason why I brought this up, because I tried to do some stuff, I mean, I tried to make some appointments on a particular board. And I was told that I couldn't do it until the term had expired. That's why I'm just asking, we're just looking at the principle of it. It's not, whoever the mayor wants to put on there, I fully support that.
From the Hamsel Rice Board.
I, I'm just simply saying, yeah, with the institute, that was a perfect example. We had to come back a week later because their terms had not expired and we had to do it two separate weeks. The first week was the last week in August, and then we had to come back and do another group the first week in September. Now, I, I just note, because the terms had not expired yet, even though we were trying to appoint them. We had to then take, cause Mr. Cooper was one of them, because we had to come back in, cause his term had not expired. And we were trying to reappoint him, but they said we couldn't do it until the following Tuesday. So I'm just trying to figure out what is, what, I mean, I mean, I'll just give you, cause it, we broke up and we did the museum board like that as well. When we had those two instances, everybody's term, the date had not expired, we had to come back several times because I think you all asked, why are we bringing these back again? And I think we made the notion, well, because the terms had not expired, they were gonna expire during that week and we had to bring them back separately. If, if, if I'm not mistaken, am I right, with the Museum of Art and with the Civil Rights Institute were two examples of that. So, those were within a week's time.
So, uh, President Parker, all we're hoping to say is the difference that we can see is it may have been a difference with the council actual improvement versus the department. I don't know on those, those previous situations that you're speaking about. I don't know those, those previous situations that you're speaking from.
But we were just confirming those, because the board made, they're the self-appointed board. Only thing we were doing, were ratifying those items, is those persons as well. We didn't have a say on who the individuals were. We were just simply ratifying the individuals. So, hold on, so that's what I'm saying, we were in a ratification mode as well. So, let's go one week delay. There's a motion for a one week delay.
This, this president, before we move.
Go ahead.
Because I, I think, I think we have to have consistency in what we do now. And, and notwithstanding who is in the office of, of attorney, or I, I have, what is it called, Office of Attorneys, I think, the city attorney. Notwithstanding that, I'm, I'm not even dealing with who's there. But the Law Department has to be consistence, consistent in its rendering, um, you know, information to this council. Because I'm here to tell you that if we do this today. Then, it opens up Pandora's Box, because I know some folk that need to be replaced, they, they have stuff coming up. And so, what I'm saying is, a day, two weeks, three months, however. You know, we just need, we need to be consistent with that. And if we're not, then, um, then we don't need a set of presidents.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hilliard.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. First of all, I wanna make it known that I support whoever the mayor wants to put on there. I have no problem with that, so I wanna make that clear. But now, on the other hand, I do have problems with some of the people that's been on some of these boards and agencies. That has not ca, carried themselves in character and representation of what we really want. And I have long wanted to replace them, or either let it be known that they'll be replaced, but I refrained and decided to wait till their term expired to do it. But now that I know this, I can start sending messages by appointing their successor early. I didn't know I had that ability to do it, but I'm very, I, I appreciate this conversation, uh, that we're having, for the mere fact. It lets me know that, uh, if you are on these boards and not carrying yourself in good character, and not presenting yourself well. Then, we can rip, we can go on and appoint your successor, and you'll know, and it'll send a message to everybody else on all these boards and agencies. That if you don't carry yourself in a good quality and a good character, that yes, uh, that's sort of like a, a impeachment. You know, and I, you know, so, 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 you know, you know that you, you've been, but in this case, I have no problems with, uh, ratifying. But, uh, whatever the council wants to do, I'm one hundred percent for it.
Okay. All right, I know Council Woods recognized, okay, so, um, where are we? Are y'all wanna?
You asked for a delay, is that what's on the tab?
We still haven't got an answer. From the Law Department.
Okay, all right, so. Here, here's where we are, so.
Listen, I'm, I'm for the mayor appointing his folk, but we got processes. And if we change the process, then it needs to be consistent, cuz I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna use it.
We, we just need, we just need.
I'm just gonna tell, I'm gonna use it, quite frankly. That's all I'm saying.
All right, so we're, he, here's the deal. All we need to do is, we can get some in writing, uh, that we can ratify terms. Uh, let's just table it, we can get that in writing real quick, we'll be ready to go. Uh. If, if you wanna do that, is that, okay.
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna table. We're gonna, a motion to table the item, so we'll bring it back before the end of the, uh, the meeting, and then we just need a memo as well.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Yeah, my question would be, okay, we're talking about a ratification of the mayor's appointment here. For positions that expire tomorrow, and they have a board meeting Monday. My question would be, on appointments and reappointments, how close? How, how soon before an appointment expires, can you make a, a new appointment?
Yeah.
And then. But, but I think that we need to know if there's a difference between ratifications of the mayor's appointments. And other entities that are self-appointing, and appointments made strictly by the council. I'd like to know if there's a difference. In how far ahead of time.
Right, yeah.
You can make your decisions.
Right.
Um, I would, I would just like to know that, if there's a difference, because I, I do not recall this being as controversial. Previously, as it is right now, but, you know, and I never miss a council meeting, so maybe I just zoned out.
No, I think it's because this is, I think, the first time it's been done so close, and the term had not expired yet. That was the only thing. And I just know we dealt with in other situations where we're ratifying things, so.
But I would like to know if there's a difference.
Oh, I would too, yeah.
And the appointments, and if there's a difference in the amount of time, like this seems timely, because tomorrow's the expiration. What if the expiration was in three months?
Right.
You know, so.
That's all we wanna know. That's a great point. That's a great point. Okay, we'll table that, and we'll ask for clarification about that real quick in writing. Okay, all right, so the motion is to table, item twenty-five. Okay, all right, that item is tabled, we'll bring it back before the end of the meeting. So, uh, next item, Mr. Clark.
Uh, give me one second, please.
To copy that item, we'll get back. Okay, again, item thirty-three was withdrawn, and we will go to item thirty-four. A resolution determining that the building or structure located at three oh nine, Kilo, uh, Kilo Drive, Birmingham, to be unsafe in public use, and directing that it be demolished.
Okay, Mr. Woods, you want to? Oh. Okay, Council Woods, you got a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Okay, second. You just want it read, right?
Uh, we were able to get some additional information, uh, during the last debate.
Okay, all right, okay.
Council Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard? Out. Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman? Out. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker.
Aye, okay. All right, can you call, I think it's forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one, could you call them all up altogether?
Okay. Item forty-nine. A resolution fixing a special assessment in the amount of three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars against property located at fourteen hundred. Thirty-sixth Avenue North, Birmingham, for the cost incurred for the demolition of unsafe building or structure. Item fifty, a resolution fix, fixing a special assessment in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Against property located at fourteen oh six, thirty-sixth Avenue North, Birmingham, for the cost incurred for the demolition of unsafe building or structure. Item fifty-one, a resolution fixing a special assessment in the amount of six thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents. Against property located at fifteen hundred, Hibernian, Hibernian Street, Birmingham, for the cost incurred for the demolition of unsafe building or structure. Motion on the items, please.
I love approval.
Okay, all right, yeah, item is before us. Um, if you just give us one second, um. I think Council Hilliard had, uh, asked for those, but, um. So, we need to give them a moment, um. Just give us, just one second, we'll be ready.
Okay, Mr. President, I, I wanna carry this over, uh, for, uh, about maybe next couple of weeks.
Okay, you want a two-week delay or three-week delay? Two-week delay, all right, there's a motion for a two-week delay on items forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one.
Second.
All right, one second, please.
Council Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn? Councilmember Smitherman? Absent, Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker.
Yes, okay, those items are ready.
Uh, two weeks, next item, Mr. Clark.
Uh, I think we're going to sixty-eight.
Okay.
Item sixty-eight, a resolution setting a public hearing August the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC, uh, two thousand and twenty dash one, to change zone district boundaries from CR five to D five. To allow construction of a new multifamily apartment building filed by Randall Minor, representing the owner, Tritic Investments LLC. For property located at thirteen oh one and thirteen oh five, Seventeenth Avenue South, and situated in Northwest Quarter of Section twelve. Township eighteen South Range three West Birmingham. Motion, please. With that, or Councilmember O'Quinn?
Doctor.
Okay, I, I thought that was somebody else, I'm sorry. All right, item is before you.
Okay, uh, we're just ready to vote.
All right, Councilmember Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt? Councilmember Hoyt?
Council Hoyt. Council Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker.
Yes, okay, next item, ma'am.
Item sixty-nine, a resolution setting a public hearing August the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map. Of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC, two thousand and twenty dash two, to change zone district boundaries from B five. To QC two, in order to, in order for the property to be redeveloped. Into an automobile dealership and service center filed by Ray Jones, representing the owner, Atlas, and C. For the property located at four eighty-eight Palisades Boulevard, and situated in Northeast Quarter of Section fourteen, Township eighteen South Range three West Birmingham. Motion, please.
Modara.
Second.
Uh, item is before you.
Uh, yeah.
Ready to vote, okay.
Just real quick, before we vote, this one, I think there's gonna be a companion package, I think, with economic development, I think there was. Just trying to make sure that all going tight. That was, this, we're setting a public hearing on sixty-nine. We'll talk about that, yeah, we'll, let's move forward, we just set in a public hearing. For item sixty-nine.
Council.
Yeah, we're ready to vote.
Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Hilliard.
Absent, Councilmember, oh, he's here, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hoyt? Councilmember O'Quinn? Councilmember O'Quinn?
Council O'Quinn, your vote.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Council, President Parker.
Yes.
All right.
Um, okay, that item passes. Uh, next item.
Addendum item seventy-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an emergency funding management agreement. With the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, under which the city will provide emergency funding to B C R I in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Payable in four equal monthly installments of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the continuation of the operation of Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. Located at five twenty-sixteenth Streets North Birmingham.
Second.
All right, item is before you.
Okay, um, how you wanna handle this? Uh, I know, uh, there was some discussion yesterday in Budget and Finance, so. We want a presentation, and then we can go from there, or, how do y'all wanna do it? Uh, let's see, Mr. Cooper here, from the B C R I, we could, I guess you can start us off, and then we can, uh. Council Abbott, I know it was in your committee yesterday, you wanna have some comments after. Good morning, how you doing?
Morning, how you doing? I'm gonna take this down, if you don't mind. Uh, as you all know, COVID nineteen has been very impressionable upon organizations and for-profits. The Institute has been closed since March fifteenth, um, but it's been, it's been very interesting, due to the, the climate that we're in. Uh, we've been getting calls, one after another, to provide guidance on, on how did Birmingham do it? You know, what is it that we have pertaining to our archives, and what we've been able to preserve over the last twenty-eight years? To really give guidance to executives and leaders throughout, not only locally, but also nationally. So, um, really, the financial impact of us being closed since March fifteenth. Has really forced us, and, and just like many others, to leverage, uh, the tools that we have today, which is specifically around technology. Um, the, the, the great thing is that we've been able to solidify a partnership with Apple that will allow us to be able to leverage augmented reality and virtual reality. During our efforts, we just didn't time the pandemic to happen at, you know, during this moment, and so, we are still in the development stage of, of that aspect. Uh, the board rallied, uh, we had a mid-year planning session a couple of weeks, uh, ago, uh, we were able to convey them on the weekend. I know they weren't too happy about that. Uh, but we had a four-hour working session to identify what is the business model of today. Cuz twenty-eight years ago, the business model was different, right? And over time, the business model was, how do we reach people in their seats without them walking into the Institute? And so, we're grateful, um, uh, with the transition of our director, we've been able to not only work with the mayor's office, but also the council. Uh, to work with Ms. Cheryl Kidd, to help, help us with our governance efforts, and then as well with Ms. Denise Gilmore, with her, uh, history and. And experience with museums in our day-to-day, um, operations, and so, I don't know if there's any specific questions, uh, that you need me to answer, but hopefully that was a good overview.
That's right. Yeah, well, and as you were talking, and, uh, expressing the fact that we got to do something different. Or you're suggesting that we do something different, and given the rich history of the Civil Rights Museum. Um, I would think that, uh, from a marketing standpoint, there ought to be some things that you all could do. Um, you know, I see it all the time on television, limited editions of certain things, you know, you got the, the, um. The coffee table book, or whatever, you know, just started to, to use it, uh, because, um. You know, funding may, may not be there, okay? But you all got to come up with ways in which to raise money to, uh, continue, and those are all opportunities.
That's right.
You know, and the fact that we in proximity of a national, um, uh, was it park? Uh, or so, and what have you, so those are things that you can, you can build on, and what have you. And, you know, you got a lot of, a lot of history there.
Right.
You know, and a lot of things you can do, uh, capture some of the things that are in the museum that people may not even know that.
Right.
That are there, and, um, and sell it to the, to the world.
That's right.
You know, I just think you have to do that, uh, you know, and you got all this young juice over there, I expect some, I expect some return on it. Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
Um.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanna say, thank you, Mr. Cooper, for, uh, coming today and, um, explaining, or just bringing us up to date on what you're doing. I know yesterday, in Budget and Finance, you had your treasurer, I believe, of your board, um, Ms. McKenzie.
Yes, ma'am.
To speak to us, and, um, at that time, they did outline, and this is just to piggyback on what Councilor Hoyt was asking. You all were, in, in your presentation yesterday, you did speak of, your board was looking at other opportunities for, um, implementing. Other ways to market the, um, Institute, and make it more, I won't say more visible, but you know, you all have competition out there.
Oh, yeah.
We don't hold the only key to civil rights history.
That's right.
And so, you've got the Lynchon Museum in Montgomery, you've got other people, so, I would just like to ensure that, um, of course, we want to support. Such a viable and, um, historical and a backbone of this city, but I would like to see some movement. I know COVID nineteen has stopped all of us in our tracks, and, uh, but I would just like to encourage your board to implement some of these, to start to work on some of these policies. Because you came to us back in December or January.
It was in February.
We had, February, we had some of the same concern, then boom, COVID hits us.
Right.
So, um, if you all could just be sure, though, to march forward, and, um, I'm seeing other people are able to do things virtually.
Right.
And open up the, um, you know, their facilities in a different way.
Right.
That now we're having to deal with COVID, so I just wanna say that, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and it, and that's, that's spot on. It was, um, not even knowing, I saw that the Crown Act was, uh, supported this morning, and if you were able to. Uh, check out our Shuttlesworth Award for Dr. Davis, Wendy Green, the legal expert behind that, uh, was the, uh, is, is who interviewed Dr. Davis. And so, I think how we can really tie in some of our, our heroes and sheros that's exemplifying civil and human rights today. And being able to point them back to what we've been able to preserve here in Birmingham, um, you know, playing, playing football, I am, uh, very aware of competition. And, and so, we, we definitely wanna make sure we capitalize on that edge, but as well, work with the council to identify any opportunities that you see as well. So, we can ensure we strengthen, um, the, the viability of the, of the Institute.
Thank you.
Mr. Hilliard, and then Dr. Quinn.
Well, first of all, let me say this, I, I, I'm, I'm very impressed. You've, you've really stepped up your game over there, and, uh, and I think you, it caused you to really have to dig down deep. And I know that you're an entrepreneur, you're a businessman, so, this is a service, and a lot of times, people don't know, that in a service. that in a service, you have to take time away from what you're doing to, to make a living, to, to, to push forward on this, and I like the direction that you're starting to dig down deep and see what we can do, and I, I know you got a new board over there, so you got some new people and some new directions, and, uh, I, I hope to be more interactive with you and help you carry your mission out, you know, uh, in the future as things, uh, continues to move on, because we need the Civil Rights Institute to continue its footprint, not just in Birmingham, but around the world. I wish we had've thought about it early and played more of a role in, uh, in the death of, uh, of John Lewis, Congressman John Lewis and that type of things. I think that even though it went from Selma to Montgomery, Birmingham should've been a spot where it was often, uh, uh, Council President and I, we talked about that, and, uh, we, we had wished that that had been, uh, something here between Civil Rights Institute and Sixteenth Street. Uh, 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 Congressman Lewis had been here many times. Matter of fact, they come here to the Tuckwiler Hotel, and they start, the, the tour actually starts here.
Yep.
And goes down in that area, so we just have to be forward thinkers on what we need to do in the future, but, uh, I, I appreciate the good works that you're doing and how you've really, uh, dived into it. I haven't had a chance to tell you that personally, but, uh, I'm your friend. I believe in pushing, uh, young people and seeing them go to the top, and you've really been doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to challenge the private sector co- community to, um, rise to the occasion and show support for the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. Um, it's a organization that's been in existence for twenty-eight years, yet it has no endowments. Um, that is appalling, in my opinion. Over recent months, we have seen the corporate community, corporate organizations, one after the other, issue statements about, um, diversity and anti-racism, and that is the work of the Civil Rights Institute. If you really want to show that you are committed to those statements that have come out one after the other, rise to the occasion and sho- support the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute.
Did you have?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just wanted to say that at budget and finance yesterday, we did ask a lot of questions, as you would expect, and I know that you were having financial issues before coronavirus ever hit, and that gave you a, a double whammy, uh, so to speak, and of course, losing your executive director right when the coronavirus hit, I mean, you've just, y'all have really had some challenges, so, um, you know, it, all of the not-for-profits, especially museum-type places, I mean, everybody is struggling right now, and I know the, you know, the zoo put animal encounters on the internet so you can go and get up close and personal with a red panda and, and all these kind of things. It's not quite the same, but of course, y'all's tight quarters over there make it where it's very difficult. I mean, I could, I guess I could go do a tour alone, but it would be hard to do a tour in a group because staying six feet away from other people is almost impossible. So, you know, we're, we're understanding of the need for this, these funds, but, you know, these funds, we don't, we don't expect that we're going to have a lot of funds, uh, to share, and so, we're very concerned that you do come up with some creative, creative ways to fundraise, and I certainly agree with what Dr. Quinn said about the corporate community, but the corporate community is hurting also, and so, everybody's hurting. I don't, I haven't met anybody who's having a good time during the, the pandemic, you know, there, no, nobody said, "I'm making money hand over fist, everything's great." There might be somebody, but I don't know who they are, so, uh, I wish you luck. I'm glad that you're young and energetic and entrepreneurial, I think that helps a lot. Um, and we will be praying for you and certainly, um, interested in hearing your plans so that we can jump on board with you and help push the train up the hill or whatever it is we're gonna have to do, get out and swim and push the boat. I mean, we're all gonna, we're all in this together, because we own the Civil Rights Institute, it's ours, just like Vulcan Park is ours, the zoo is ours, the botanical gardens is, you know, these things that belong to us, we've got to figure out a way to make them, make them work. So, uh, so I appreciate your efforts, I'm glad to see you here today, and, um, and we're with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir, just while you're here, man, I just wanted to, to really thank you, appreciate you for your leadership. I know you came in and immediately pretty much got hit with a crisis, and so, it's, uh, uh, you know, pretty much being willing to sacrifice your time, but I think it, uh, in the middle of a financial crisis, it probably got one of the best people at the helm, uh, that you really could, and so, um, you know, we're looking forward to better days, but just wanna appreciate your leadership through this process now.
Thank you, Council members.
All right, uh, anybody else? All right, Mr. Clark.
Council Protem Alexander.
Aye.
Councilman McGee.
Aye.
Councilman Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilman Parker.
All right, okay, that item passes, next item, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, there was one presentation from Councilor Woods had, um, yeah, I know, I was, I just needed to recognize Councilor Woods, real quick, I think he had a quick, two-minute presentation you had, I think it was with, uh, Mr., um, yeah, with, uh, Mr. Jackson, that was one of the presentations up.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson, come on up, I think you had a request in a couple of minutes, if you come on up.
Part of the presentation, unless it was omitted, I'm sorry. Can you? Can you do it in about two minutes? Yeah, we're, we're gonna go to all that, I was just saying it was just, it was a. Oh, no, no, that's fine, go ahead, good morning, how you doing?
Good morning.
All right, yes, sir, take your time.
Post will speak for itself.
With, Mr. Jackson, can you, we can't hear you because of the microphone, so if you can.
Gotcha.
Okay.
How about that?
That's fine, just wanna make sure we can.
This is about health equity. We are in a crisis. Uh, COVID.
Get the microphone, what I'm saying is.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. This is an initiative Citizens for Better Schools Sustainable Communities is implementing this weekend. Equity first, equity in healthcare, you guys know about, you read about AL dot com, done a decent job about healthcare disparities. COVID has unveiled all of this. I want to announce right now, COVID is in your school district right now. The sanitation, the, the, uh, maintenance department, HVAC, transportation department have employees who have been exposed to COVID. We have tried to reach the interim superintendent with no response. We're coming out publicly now to announce it to everyone, because we're talking about our children's health. It is a wildfire. Our state leaders have defaulted, and they've allowed COVID to get out of hand in Alabama. I think you all have read about Alabama, is on many states quarantine list. Right now, the public announcement person for the COVID, uh, not the COVID, but the Health Department, the person relation, person is up in Chi- in Chicago, Illinois, at a golf conference. Chicago is on the quarantine list for many states, he's supposed to be there at least, I think, ten days or so. I'm contacting, uh, Mark Wilson to let him know about this. What we're simply saying to you now, that's been the political move to just put all the burden on the public to shelter in place or maintain social distance, we're beyond that now. We need a quarantine, if you're gonna stop it. Go to NPR today, they have a wonderful explanation as to the reason why. In your nightclub, we'll call on the police chief right now, and your fire department to enforce the limits on how many people are in there, you can do that with your statutes right now. I'm telling you right now that we're beyond the point that you can rely on volunteerism. It must be about enforcement now. Now, we're doing everything we can to move the needle, Mark Wilson has already said, this is a political matter. We have home rules by statute, the legislature gave it to us long ago, but for political reasons, he won't enforce it. Volunteerism will not defeat COVID. If we don't go into quarantine in this nation now, and I remain, remind you rather, all politics is local. If you don't want your children sick, and most of your families, a lot of them, will be overburdened with hospital bills, that's my plea to you now. You council members, the black community in these districts out here, but I'm here for everybody, regardless of race, go look at, read, you can't look at NPR, you can read it, the article, the stories are there. I beseech you now, if you wanna claim you love the children, get to moving. I wanna talk with y'all, I'll contact your legal department, we'll associate you with the national resources that we have to help you with it, but if you don't act now, Birmingham will suffer. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
That's fine, but I know Mr. Jackson has a lead, but go ahead, yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Um, let me thank you, uh, because, um, that is the reiteration of what I said last week, is that we know that majority of public schools are black and brown children, and for the state to drag their feet on whether or not we would have school this fall is a travesty. And, um, and the fact, I would say, I'm, um, encouraged by, um, Dr. Sullivan, uh, them making the decision to do virtual for the first nine weeks, I think that's important. Um, and I would hope all the schools, you know, and all of our municipalities, I think we got thirty-six, thirty-seven municipalities within Jefferson County, would make that decision, because, um, if we don't, and now, it presents another problem, because parents have to work, and so, you got last key kids again, that's primarily doing the day and don't have the kind of guidance that they need, and so, we gotta figure that out too. Uh, Mr. Jackson, I, I know you on top of, uh, when it comes to education, but we gotta figure that out as well. But I do appreciate the board making this decision, and, um, you know, and I thought the superintendent, Mackey, uh, drug his feet, uh, because, um, you know, cause majority of, um, the, the majority of population are in private schools, we don't have to guess that, you can just look at the students and see, and Birmingham, you know, it's very little, but I do believe we have to be concerned about all of our children, because if you don't, then, um, you know, we're gonna have, those numbers gonna go up, and the numbers of death would even, uh, augment, uh, with that, in that respect. So, I appreciate you coming here today, and I like.
We appreciate y'all's proactive action.
Yeah.
Quickly, thank you.
Yeah, I like the black and gold.
Okay. All right, thank you all, okay, um, we're gonna go to, uh, our old and new business, so, where do you wanna go?
We're gonna do announcements now.
Yeah, with announcements and stuff, y'all wanna start, everybody, anybody have anything pertinent, right? Okay, well, I know where you wanna start, Mr. Hilly, we'll start with you first, and then we'll work our way around.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
First of all, let me say this, and it was, it's interesting, because, uh, that we had this talk about these board appointments, cause I have right here already written, so it's, and I'm not just winning drummed up because of the conversation, but, uh, but, uh, we have some board vacancies on a lot of our boards that, uh, that are privy on the economic development, and we want to go in and start filling, so please send your resumes, uh, if you're interested in serving on, uh, boards and agencies, uh, to, uh, my office, you can send them to, uh, tevin, T E V I N dot Jones, J O N E S, at Birmingham A L dot G O V, tevin dot Jones at Birmingham A L dot G O V. If you're interested in serving on boards and agencies, uh, we're getting ready to, uh, take some applications and, and bring them forward. Now, uh, tonight at seven-thirty PM, we will have our weekly viral town hall meeting. Our, our guest speaker tonight is Ms. Tammy Coffram, the owner and CEO of TC Consultant, uh, uh, to talk with us tonight about, uh, mental health, you know, uh, with the pandemic going on, with, with jobs being at an all-time high, uh, you and I both know that, uh, there's a lot of stress and pressures on all families, so we're asking people, rather than, uh, hold it in, to, uh, find ways to get counseling, to get help, and, uh, e- even I as a counselor, we get a lot of, uh, stress on us sometimes, counsel people, uh, colleagues, and so, uh, you can call in tonight at five oh eight nine two four one three four nine, five oh eight nine two four, uh, one three four nine, and there's no access code, we'll be glad to have you call in tonight, and, uh, she'll be there to answer questions and talk about mental health in our communities. Uh, the Dolomite Neighborhood will have their virtual, uh, meeting tonight at six o'clock PM. If you're interested in, uh, tuning in to the Dolomite Virtual Town Hall Meeting, you can call six oh two five eight zero ninety-five twenty-five, six oh two five eight zero ninety-five twenty-five. The access code is thirty-seven eighty-nine forty-two six, thirty-seven eighty-nine forty-nine, well, I messed that up, but anyway, three seven eight nine four two six, uh, that will be the access code. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and it's District Nine time, thank you.
All right, we're gonna finish our announcements, and then we've gotta take up item twenty-five, so I just wanna make sure before.
I'm gonna ask if, um, council will repeat that number.
Okay, but, but which one? Oh, the mental health number, five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine, five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine, and that call will start at seven-thirty tonight PM, uh, with TC, um, Mental Health and Counseling Center. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
And just, and outside of, of, of the young lady, have we also, you know, we've always been talking about the, the crisis line that we have set up, just next, Erico, two zero five, uh, three two three, I think, seven 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 seven, and I think we have promoted that in the past when COVID first started, cause we knew a lot of people were dealing with a lot of issues, and COVID is still around, so we will continue to promote the issue. That's a twenty-four hour, um, hotline that is manned by persons, so you won't be getting a recording, but, uh, we encourage those as we continue to deal with COVID, and it seems like it's gonna be around for a while longer, and you will see, and also even on the suicide, uh, issue is coming up, so, uh, we'll be working on all those things, um, as we work on our whole, uh, communication outreach, uh, to deal with COVID, so, that's all. So, Dr. Quinn, we'll start this way, then we'll.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, um, I had the pleasure of speaking with Dr. Sullivan, interim superintendent of Birmingham City Schools yesterday, and, um, we touched on the subject of, uh, the, the coming school year, as Councilor Hoyt just mentioned, the first nine weeks of school will be, uh, virtual classes, and, um, registration for Birmingham City Schools is open now. You can do it on a mobile device, um, online, he says that it's super easy. If you're, have been enrolled in Birmingham City Schools previously, uh, all you need to do is one click to confirm that your information has not changed, and it's super important that you actually register, because only registered students will get the Wi-Fi hotspots and, um, tablets in order to, uh, participate in those online classes, so, uh, please help us spread the word that students need to, uh, parents need to register their children for school, um, and they can do that, uh, for the, the next couple of weeks, and it is super easy, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilor Hoyt, and we'll work our way back this way. Do you have any announcements, are you good, or?
No, I think there's a meeting. Uh, tonight, uh, via, um, online for, I mean, via Zoom, um, with respect to, uh, Bush Hills, that's it.
Okay, all right, Councilor Abbott, good morning, again.
Morning.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just wanted to say that budget and finance, our next meeting is going to be August tenth, sounds like it's a long way away. Sounds like it's a long way away, but it really isn't. So just want everybody to get their items in on time and thoroughly documented.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, and I did want to say that I heard a very nice compliment about the Birmingham school system's plan for the first nine weeks to be virtual. A friend of mine was surfing around through all the different suburban school systems and said that Birmingham's plan was the best. And they were looking at the systems that always come out number one, number two, and number three, if you get my drift. And they said Birmingham's plan was heads above everyone else's. So I thought that was really good to hear, it made me happy because, you know, we often hear negativity, you know, that seems to be just about all we hear. And then for someone to say something so positive, and it was on a conference call and so everybody on the conference call heard it, but I was gratified to hear that Birmingham was number one in this person's opinion and I valued that person's opinion. So I just wanted to say that, good news for Birmingham schools. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, yes ma'am, Councilor Smithman?
Thank you, President Parker. The respect organization will have their 25th Respect Back to School Rally. It'll be a drive-through rally, the theme this year is Driven to Respect. It will be this Saturday from noon to 2 PM at More Than Conqueror's Faith Church at the Bethesda Family Life Center. They'll be having free back-to-school essentials that will support classroom and online learning. I think they're giving away Chromebook tablets. They'll have free community resources and curb-served lunch to go and they'll have masks with book bags and tablet giveaways. A couple of weeks ago, I got about 2,000 books from Better Basics, I'll be there passing out books. It'll be from the ages of baby age to about sixth or seventh grade. And then my last announcement is, my neighborhood suffered a, two deaths this weekend. My neighbors actually died. It was Ms. Wilder and her son, Wilder Jr. Ms. Wilder was one of the first female principals in the city of Birmingham. Her husband was taught at Hamp Hill Elementary School. She was a great person, I've known her all my life. We're in shock, we're very sad. I want to send my condolences to Mr. Lumsey, who's a CRO, that was his aunt. We'll be praying for the Lumsey family as well. So I'm just very sad right now, you just never know, life is short, that's all I can say. Thank you, President Parker.
Thank you very much, I just have a few announcements. First, I would like to announce that today at the Roosevelt City Benjamin Green Housing, there is a walk-up COVID-19 testing that will be taking place from 2 to 4:30. The testing is available at no cost to all who are interested regardless of symptoms or potential exposure to someone with COVID-19. So no appointment is necessary and testing is available for those with or without insurance. So we just had Mr. Jackson to talk about the equity and some of the disparity that we see in healthcare. So this is an opportunity for you to get tested without having insurance if you want to get tested. So, and that's being sponsored by the Jefferson County Health Department. Second, I do just want to give some kudos to some of our neighbors in District 7 who this weekend, we hear a lot of response, I think each of us as counselors. We get calls about the trash, the filth, lots not being cut and things of that nature and just looking for some type of a resolve in that. And these were two groups of neighborhood leaders who went out on their own this weekend. First is the Magic City Blightbusters. And I believe they've obtained grants before through community development or other agencies. But they were out in District 7 in West Galway and Tarply City. And so I want to thank those two neighborhood presidents, Ms. Cheryl Scott and Rosalyn Young, for bringing those into their area. They have been complaining about some lots and some areas that need to be cleaned and so the blightbusters came in and did that work and helped relieve those neighbors of that blight, so we thank them. I also like to thank Pastor Nate Brooks with the Greater St. John Baptist Church over there on Carlos Avenue. Every fourth Saturday, they provide free food and for the neighbors in the area and they also bring that food down to Lynn Park. And so I want to thank them for the work they do, so I was out with both of them last weekend. So that's every fourth Saturday, so I want to thank Pastor Brooks and his congregation. Next, I just wanted to offer this information for the public and I will say due diligence. I do receive a monthly retirement check from American Red Cross, so I do want to let you know that. But I am trying to help them out and get the message out for them. They are in a need of blood and platelets during this time of COVID-19. They also need convalescent plasma. And that's plasma that's donated from a person that has had COVID-19 who is now symptom-free. But they need that for those patients that are currently in the hospital. So you can log on to redcross.org and you can put in your zip code and they will give you a location. I do believe the UAB location is open at several hours, but that may be affected now with COVID-19. So just want to put that out there, if you feel healthy enough and you go to redcross.org and look at the criteria for donating, please do that. The last thing I want to do is I do want to mention that District 7, we are going to lose a very, very powerful and dynamic person to retirement on August 31st. Dr. Perry Ward, who is the president of what I consider a crown jewel in District 7, is retiring. And we have seen so much innovation and leadership from Dr. Ward and we do consider them to be a crown jewel in District 7 when it comes to providing education and quality of life. They have a lot of programs that are free that you can sign on for certification and certificates. Of course, you can get a two-year degree from them and so I just want to thank Dr. Ward for his leadership. He is the fourth president in the history of Lawson State and who has served and in the 71-year history of Lawson State. I was just about to say, I remember when they built Lawson State, but it's not quite, I'm not quite that old, but. So anyway, I do want to thank Dr. Ward for his service and those are our announcements.
Thank you, and real quick, President Protem, if it's somewhere before he leaves, we can do something. If you could spearhead that.
We'll do that, I'll be sure to do that, thank you.
And we'll bring him, if that's.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, even if we need to go out and interview and get our team to go out.
We'll do that.
Not only to interview Dr. Ward, but we all, I mean, or interview some of the other people in the community as well.
We'll do that, thank you.
Yeah, and let's honor him before he leaves, the 31st is that?
Yes, I was gonna, I was gonna ask the President Protem, who's the newest pastor in your district?
Oh my goodness, oh Lord, forgive me. I, oh, I messed up. I also want to thank and tell people in District 7, we are so happy to have our newest pastor at
Noble Chapel.
Noble Chapel CME out in the Riley community. And I believe that Pastor Hoyt preached his first sermon there, was it last weekend?
Last week.
And so we're just very excited, we didn't know and so we did get that announcement. Thank you for coming to District 7, we expect you to be a great community friend, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll have to ease over there some days. All right, cool, all right, you want to bring up? So what?
Wear your mask.
Oh, wear your mask, oh absolutely, all right, we're gonna, item 25, we're gonna, motion to take it off the table.
Some move.
Good morning. Attorney King, yes ma'am.
Good morning, President, good morning, Council. So I wanted to provide you all, I provided everyone through President Parker and Ms. Kidd with the actual case law from the Alabama Supreme Court, which has held that an appointment may be made before the expiration of the appointing officer's term and that an appointing officer or body may appoint another before the incumbent's term ends. So I do want you all, there were some questions that came up. It's up to the council to establish a precedence, whether it be 30 days or less, which you all can do through ordinance to address those other concerns.
Thank you, real quick before, Attorney King, thank you for that, thank you again. I know Council Hilliard, I was a little jealous that City Attorney King was on your, with your group about a month ago.
Yes.
And so, City Attorney King, she came and spoke to some residents via phone last week and I just want to tell you thank you as well. So the program she has, I think is going to work. And so whatever we need to do, City Attorney King, whatever tools you need to assist, I know you have a team of people, but whatever we need to do to help either beef it up, I think it's gonna, it's gonna be very, very effective. So I just want to let you know, it's Hilliard, I, you know, we, and I want to thank the mayor as well because I think it's important, but I just want to tell you thank you for that, so, yes ma'am.
But just very quickly, I do want to remind everyone, today is the July edition of the webisode D7 on the Move. So today at 1:30, you will be able to log on to any of our social media sites. And our focus for this month's webisode, we'll be focusing on how we rid and what we worked through to rid the city of blight. So we'll have Ms. Deborah Dubose, she is a code, with the code enforcement supervisor of the city of Birmingham. So she'll be talking about how the code enforcers go out and write the codes and the process that it takes to actually get a property either condemned or to get it corrected. And we also have Mr. Edwin Revelle, he's the director of planning, engineering, and permits. So you'll be able to tune into that starting at 1 o'clock today, thank you.
All right, Council Smithman, you have one comment.
Yeah, please give me, I would like to pass a resolution of sympathy for both of them. Barbara Wilder and Willie Wilder Jr. are their names.
So, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, let's, let's deal, let's, let's deal with item 25 and then I'll, I'll recognize you. I just gave.
I thought this.
No, if you, if we could have the names for item 25.
You've got Earl Kelly, reappointment, and you got R. Ashby-Pate replacing Edgar Marks.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're ready to vote, that was Council Hoyt and Council Smithman, second that.
Council Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt? Yes. Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams is absent, Councilmember Woods is absent, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember, President Parker?
Yes, okay, those individuals are appointed or ratified through. So thank you all and thank the mayor and thank City Attorney King and City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney Smiley as well.
And Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
This gentleman that we just appointed, one of them, was a former justice on the Supreme Court of the island nation of Palau.
Wow.
I don't think we've ever had anyone like that before, I found that to just be fascinating.
Oh no, I agree, I agree, no, 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 we're good with that, we're looking forward to great things. No, 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 I've called on Counselors, Counselor Smithman, Mr. Hilliard, has, she has a resolution you wanted to bring up?
Oh yeah, the resolution of sympathy, my apologies for speaking out of turn, for Barbara Wilder and Willie Wilder Jr. Both of them passed away this weekend, this past weekend.
You mentioned that during your comments, so we just didn't do it.
I didn't do the resolution, yeah.
Okay, we want to offer those resolutions.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, move the resolution.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, hold on, hold on, Council Hilliard and Council Horton, we're gonna, we're gonna move to adjourn after that. Council Hilliard?
First of all, that piece of legislation we just passed has brought a new revelation to me and I'm glad to know that we have that too at our fingertips. And secondly, I want to say on, on, on the other day, I went to Selma, Alabama to, to walk across the Eddis Pettus Bridge with, and walk beside the body of Congressman John Lewis. It was indeed a quite humbling experience to be there and represent our city council. And my, I thank Mr. President for allowing me to be able to do it and represent it. So I wore my shirt with the Birmingham City Council on it and I let people know we were in the house. And then we traveled and followed the body to Montgomery where, where we were able to recognize the body in the rotunda. And that was the first time that has been done for a sitting congressman in the Birmingham area. And I want to say that we were real representative, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, we'll be waiting to see your video and all your interviewing. He was on TV being as an, almost, we thought he was one of the reporters out there. You were, you were spot on, so, you know, we were communicating via phone like, well, hey, you know, you walking backwards doing the interview. So thank you and look forward to, to your video next week. Council Horton, you, you want to wrap us up?
I was shocked, I guess I must have been doing something else where you was talking about the Wilders. And she was an awesome somstress. But, I mean, trained voice and what have you. And the reason I know her because Ms. Pruitt is one of my surrogate mothers and she lived next door to her. And they would often come and check on Ms. Pruitt before she left going to Dallas. But I'm sad to hear that, so both of them passed.
Yes, uh-huh, and they live literally like right next door to us, so yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Both of them, yeah.
Don't know, yeah, but I tell you, that's a great loss, yeah.
All right.
He's our attorney brother.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Aye. All opposed? That was UC?
No, that was motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, thank you, all be safe out here.